Item number three, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I move we adopt the agenda as published.
Moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number four is a proclamation. I'm going to come down to the podium.
And present it now.
I'm going to call a few names. Your president, come forward. Rex Parker.
Joe.
There we go. Rex Parker. Sarah Dance. Carla Fay. Ryan Jones. Nicole Claiborne. Okay. Thank you all for being here. So today's proclamation is with regards to MS Awareness Week. Whereas multiple sclerosis is a neurological disease in the central nervous system affecting 2.3 million people worldwide, and the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been committed for more than 70 years to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge about and insight into the disease. And whereas in Idaho, more than 4,400 people are living with MS, and that this disease generally strikes people in the prime of their life between the ages of 20 and 50. And whereas the cause and course of MS remain unknown and no cure currently exists, even though more than 974 million in groundbreaking research has occurred to pursue prevention, treatment, and a cure. And whereas the Treasure Valley MS Walk brings together the community and raises funds to change the world for everyone affected by multiple sclerosis, and this year's walk will be held in Meridian's Julius Kleiner Memorial Park on April 13, 2019. And whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, and one that all Americans and Idahoans should support. Therefore, I, Joe Borton, on behalf of Mayor Tammy DeVird and our entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 10 through 16, 2019, as MS Awareness Week throughout the city of Meridian, and we urge all of our community members to become informed and involved in the fight so we can imagine a world without multiple sclerosis. Due to this 12th of March, 2019. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. You bet.
I just want to say we're very excited to have our flagship event, Walk MS in Meridian. That is again Saturday, April 13 in Julius Kleiner Park. It's a wonderful location for us. We love the park. We love Meridian. We're expecting over 1,200 walkers this year. The fundraiser is free to attend, so please come on out. And this year, we're also having a beer festival immediately following the walk. So come for the walk, stay for the beer fest, bring your family. We'd love to see you.
Can we take a picture with us?
Sure.
We're going to sort of squish. Yeah. Squish over here. Get a written photo at least.
Corey's lineker.
I just wanted to say, Bert, I was...
Oh, thank you.
Hi. Wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thanks, Joe.
Item number five on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just note for the record that I'm here, apologies for the delay in my absence, but I move that we approve the consent agenda as published. For the council president to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as published. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylan.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. So item number seven, community items and presentations. We will begin with our Solid Waste Advisory Commission Annual Report. Mr. Corey, thanks for coming. Left you facing the wrong way with the podium. Apologize for that.
I'm in town.
Appreciate you being here this afternoon.
Members of the council, thank you. I, Steve Corey, stand before you to represent the Solid Waste Advisory Commission and to give you our report on our activities during fiscal year 2018. The commission enjoyed a complete year of full membership. We'd like to thank you for your understanding and support as Meridian transitions with creation of a paid solid waste professional on city payroll. Towards the end of the year, Commissioner Caldwell finished her term, and we also had our previous two staff positions, Commissioner Glenn and Commissioner Pogue, finished their terms, and the commission wants to thank the city and Commissioners Glenn and Pogue for their service, as we would not have been able to achieve what we have without their vital assistance. One of our prime responsibilities is the Community Recycling Fund program. The beginning balance at the start of FY18 was just over $44,000. Over the course of the year, there were additions of about $27,500, consisting of $26,000 that was rebated back in excess fees for the hazardous waste collection program, a contribution from Public Works through the Expo program of $1,200, and hand in hand generated about $235 over the year. Actual distributions that we've reimbursed for were at $11,250 roughly, and then projects which are approved but have not yet been reimbursed come to about $27,500. And so at this time, the Community Recycling Fund nonencumbered balance is roughly $33,000. I'm going to go through those specific projects next. First, for recycle a bicycle this last year, we were authorized to go ahead and use up to $500. We only used about $250, and we used it to co-host with Republic Services the Second Annual Recycle a Bicycle Program, which is held in conjunction with the city's Unplug and Be Outside event held in Kleiner Park. Thirty-two bicycles destined for the landfill were retrieved from the Meridian Transfer Station. They were repaired and repurposed for the benefit of Meridian citizens. SWAC Commissioner Cheryl Caldwell chaired the committee that worked so hard to make the event the hit it was. This year, Commissioner Mark Nelson has stepped up, and he will be our liaison on this activity. The event will be held this year on May 5. Next, SWAC received funding approval to supply each of 1,500 households with a year's supply of Hefty Energy Bags that came to roughly about $11,000. SWAC is monitoring the program and will report back to you appropriately. Due to the recent retail sales of the orange bags on Albertson's shelves, it is unlikely that SWAC will seek additional CRFP funding authorization to support this program. Now, for the projects which we have approval for but haven't been completed yet, first we had $2,750 set aside for a topo leaf-shaped bench, and then also $9,700 set aside for purchasing and installing 35 trashcan receptacles for the Phase 1 of Meridian's Discovery Park. And the receptacles have been assembled, they just haven't been installed yet. They'll be installed just before the opening of the park. And finally, with Meridian Library District, we received funding approval to purchase and repurpose a 40-foot shipping container into a mini-mobile library. The tiny library is open, and it's a huge success, and this innovative and creative project is already winning awards. Now for our activities throughout the year. For Trash and Treasure, SWAC successfully expanded year two of this innovative program. The event occurred the weekend before the commencement of the 2018 Spring Collection Week. Residents set out at the curb unwanted items, allowing others to come by, pick them up, and give them a new home, thus diverting items from the landfill. Post-event feedback was positive, and SWAC voted for the event to be held citywide in 2019 with your approval, and this year's event will be also on May 5. The Hand-in-Hand Recycle Program is in its second year and continues to generate modest revenue for the CRFP. Both Republic Services and the city continue to market the program and use it as an educational platform for a variety of forums. In SWAC's annual activity, we hosted a booth at the Public Works Expo here at City Hall. That effort was chaired by Commissioner Larson, and this year's booth focused on the cost of contamination and testing people's ability to identify three types of contamination in a bin of commingled and recycled materials. SWAC continues to provide advice on county services through the County's Committee on Solid Waste. There's also been significant conversation over the course of this last year on the county's disposal fee structure. I continue to represent the city's interest on the committee. During the annual rate adjustment this year, the rate adjustment for both commercial and residential services was comprised of the contractual Consumer Price Index adjustment, and for recycling programs, the shift of recycling processing costs to customers for one year as set forth in a separate contract amendment. A little bit more detail on that. China's Greensword Initiative caused a global recycling industry crash, which negatively impacted national and local recycling programs, including the cities. SWAC worked diligently with staff, Republic Services, and Western Recycling, and other local agencies to learn about the swiftly changing conditions in order to keep city council informed. SWAC worked with Republic Services and city staff to assess the many issues involved, including Republic Services' request for the city to select one of its proffered options to change the residential recycling program and to shift the structural obligation to pay 100% of the processing costs to residential households via rate increase. The county's household hazardous waste program continues to provide a cherished service to our citizens. Commissioner Nelson attends the quarterly meetings that advise that program. For our residential services, the activities that we've had have included glass recycling, where SWAC along with Republic Services brought forward a monthly subscription program for curbside glass recycling, which was approved by you. Additionally, you approved the location of a city-sponsored glass recycling container at the Meridian Transfer Station for free glass drop-off. To give you some idea of what that program is, for those that want to have the glass picked up at their house, they're being charged $6.47 per household per month, and it has risen to the point of having 175 subscribers. Compare that to our grass program, which is at 270, so it's starting to be used as much as our other volunteer service. Over the course of, since August, Republic has collected 3.9 tons of glass at the curbside from the residents, and there's been 3.6 tons dropped off at the transfer station. So it seemed to have been a very good design, and I would expect very soon we will have the commercial portion of this coming up and running because of particularly Albertson's Fresh Market wanting to have this as part of their business model. Second on this list is the commercial services, the curbside services chart, and SWAC with staff and Republic Services' input and assistance continues to maintain that chart as a handy reference for the public. On the spring cleanup, SWAC requested and assisted Republic Services and city staff to improve the marketing for this vital program, resulting in the insert in the billing this And on citizen inquiries, SWAC vetted two inquiries related to lid placement on the bins and container location on collection days. That second item, of course, has resulted in us making a recommendation for a code change, which will be up for your consideration soon, I believe. Presentations that we've received in order to help with these activities include Republic Services' routine quarterly and annual reports, numerous presentations on China's Greensword Initiative, presentations on the Hefty Energy Bag Program, a presentation on a proposed composting program by a Meridian firm, numerous presentations on Ada County Landfills tipping fees, presentations associated with the proposed solid waste rate and new fees for this year, and also presentations on solid waste roles and responsibilities and the related changes with that, again, in relationship to us having some staff within the city's staff contingent. Upcoming business includes assisting city staff to perform a new survey regarding trash and recycling service preferences, promoting SWAC's Trash or Treasure hand-in-hand and recycle-a-bicycle programs, expanding educational outreach to decrease contamination in commingled residential recycling streams, monitoring yard composting market trends, continuing leadership role on the Ada County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and attending the quarterly Ada County Hazardous Waste Program meetings. In conclusion, it has been a productive year for SWAC. We continue to gain experience and appreciation of the many challenges facing solid waste and recycling industries. Our commitment is steadfast to work in partnership with staff and Republic Services to identify and recommend to you improved, fiscally responsible trash and recycling services and programs that benefit the Meridian residents and commercial customers. SWAC looks forward to an even greater productivity in the year to come, and with that, I would certainly love to have questions.
Thank you, Steve. I don't know how you could be more productive. It's quite a list. Great work for you and the entire group. Council, any questions? And Mr. Corey? Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just one. I echo Council President Borton's comments. Think about where the commission was in the projects that you were just starting to talk about a year ago and how far we've come. It's pretty amazing. But talking specifically about the county disposal fee schedule, I know there was considerable conversation in 2018, and then it seems that we, at least as a council, I haven't heard any updates. I don't know if there's any news to report. Are there changes that are coming? What do we as a council need to be prepared to see in the future?
Councilman Cavanagh, President. Yes, it has been rather hectic over the last couple of months, and I'm happy to say I haven't had to go ahead and pass that wave through me. But at the end of January, staff at the county went ahead and proposed that there would be a single rate for all waste received up at the county. That would be at $33 per ton. The effect on Meridian is, right now, we're paying $22 per ton for our household waste that's collected, which would mean that we'd have a 50% increase for citizens. And for biosolids, that's currently being charged out at $11 per ton, so it would be a 200% increase on those services. We did make comment at that particular point that both of those waste streams come in pre-processed, compacted to a certain extent, and that there ought to be some recognition of the cost savings to county operations, including the fact that by consolidating the material and not having numerous residential trucks going up there and instead using the transfer trucks, there was a lot more, a lot less air pollution in the county, allowing the county to continue its land development policies, and just numerous benefits to the county. And with the assistance of our neighbors to the east and others around here, the recommendation was made to the Ada County Commission to have a cost of services study performed, which goes in and takes a look at the cost for each waste stream that's received. And staff accepted that direction from the commission, and they currently have a request for proposal out, which they hope to award in April, with the report expected in June. And then they will pick it up at that point to go ahead and work on further considerations going forward. Let's see. So there's no activity that's going to be happening in the next six months, but having stated those numbers, remembering that the disposal component, when it comes down to the trash bin level, what that would translate to is for those persons that had as their primary container a 35-gallon container, it would hit them with an increase of 50 cents per month per household. For those with 65-gallon cans, it would be about a dollar, and for those that have the 95-gallon can, it would be about a dollar and a half. But it does lead us into a very significant issue at that point, because, well, those increases would be necessary to maintain the transfer station here in Meridian, and presumably, well, we'll have to look at that if that issue does come to us, but that increase in the cost of disposing of the biosolids is much more troubling, and that one, we're going to have to watch very closely, and it could have a very significant impact on our households.
Steve, I appreciate it. Appreciate the update.
You too.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mylan.
Thank you very much, Steve. Yeah, it's hard to hear about everything that you're doing and then thinking about you're just coming into busy season, with all the projects coming up. And I hope to also encourage everybody in this room and all of the council members to participate in the Trash or Treasure event that's going citywide.
Both ways.
Both ways. Pick stuff up, drop stuff off.
I'm still looking forward to it. Great program. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Steve, as always. You're one of the best, buddy. I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Good work.
If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and translate to a thank you to the commission for all the hard work they do, because I definitely am nothing without the help that I get from my commission and from our staff. David Miles has been an immense help, having come onboard.
Please do. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, 7B, Chindon West Project Presentation and Update.
Thank you, President Borton, members of the council. My name is Jake Melder. I'm a spokesperson for the Idaho Transportation Department, and it is my pleasure to tell you a little bit about some of the improvements we're going to be making on US 2026, a route we affectionately call Chindon West. And joining with me today is Bryant Keakley from the Langdon Group. He is some consultant services support. We are together the communications team for this project. I believe you guys had included in your packet just a little one-pager, two-sided handout on what the project is. Today, I want to just give you a brief overview of what it is that we're going to be doing, when we're going to be doing it, and our long-range vision for the corridor. So the improvements that we will be making start at Eagle Road and they head west. We'll be focusing really all the way to Highway 16 in my presentation today. What those improvements will be, will be to add a lane in each direction. The ultimate facility of where we're going to get to is a four-lane, four-travel lane facility with a center lane. It could be a turn lane, it could be a medianed lane. There will be wider curbs on the side. There's going to be actual curbing put in, in the urban areas, and there will be a detached sidewalk on the south side of those improvements. Those improvements were originally scheduled to go in in a phased approach year by year, starting this year, or, excuse me, 2021, and moving forward on the mile, but thanks to some new funding, additional funding through some sales tax anticipation revenue agreements, also known as STAR agreements, we've been able to accelerate them pretty considerably. So, we will be tearing up Chindon, starting late this year, and five out of the six miles between Eagle Road and 16 will be under construction in the year 2020. So we do anticipate some pretty significant impacts for folks that are traveling there. It's a high commuter route, but it'll be like ripping off a Band-Aid. Instead of going through it for seven years, most of it will be done in one year. Once that's done, this is considered Phase 1 of our overall corridor plan for Chindon West. You can see on the second back page what our long-range plan is going to include. Phase 2 will be to widen the highway to three lanes in each direction, a six-lane facility. And then Phase 3 is going to be high-capacity intersections at key areas where we're going to be having a lot of high capacity. We've got to get people moving through those intersections. So that's a little bit about what the project is going to be. Appreciate the opportunity to come here today to inform you about what we're doing, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jake. Council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Jake, nice to meet you. Appreciate you being here. Talk to me a little bit about, we've got construction that's going to happen from McDermott to Linder, 2019, 2020, as well as construction happening on Lucas Grove to Eagle, 2019 to 2020. Are those happening separately from each other or in stereo?
So they are separate projects, and so they do have a little bit of separate guidance with it, depending on how the contractors want to go about it. The first project, Lucas Grove to Eagle, is going to be administered by ITD, and so we're going to have a lot more control of the details of how that's going to go down. The other contract is part of the STAR agreement with Costco, and there, the contracting language, it's a little bit more flexible in terms of what the contractor's going to be. We are still administering that, what that contract is, and we'll be directing it, but it's just a little more squishy in terms of ITD's oversight. Why we're going to be doing those things, or what's happening, 2019 this year, it's going to be primarily irrigation work while the water's out of the canals. Roadwork itself isn't really going to hit until 2020.
Mr. President, follow-up. Share then with us just a little bit about, I don't know, from an ITD perspective, is it best that all that construction's happening at the same time? I assume hearing from our residents, they always get frustrated that there's no way to kind of work around road construction, so from your perspective, what's the route that you guys are going to prefer to take and maybe share with us a little bit about what we're doing to educate our citizens so they know, they see one project, that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be other projects that are going to be happening right around the same time?
Yeah, thank you, Member Cavanagh. So we also have, I believe it's being displayed, yes, right here, this is a graphic that we put together in conjunction with the Ada County Highway District, because they're also going to be doing some projects in that area. What it comes down to is that these improvements are needed today, and so being able to fund them and construct them now is going to serve the people that use those facilities that much quicker.
But thanks to some new funding, additional funding through some sales tax anticipation revenue agreements, also known as STAR agreements, we've been able to accelerate them pretty considerably. So we will be tearing up Chindon, starting late this year, and five out of the six miles between Eagle Road and sixteen will be under construction in the year 2020. So we do anticipate some pretty significant impacts for folks that are traveling there. It's a high commuter route, but it'll be like ripping off a Band-Aid. Instead of going through it for seven years, most of it will be done in one year. Once that's done, this is considered phase one of our overall corridor plan for Chindon West. You can see on the second back page what our long-range plan is going to include. Phase two will be to widen the highway to three lanes in each direction, a six-lane facility. And then phase three is going to be high-capacity intersections at key areas where we're going to be having a lot of high capacity. We've got to get people moving through those intersections. So that's a little bit about what the project is going to be. Appreciate the opportunity to come here today to inform you about what we're doing, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jake. Counsel, any questions? Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Jake, nice meeting you. Appreciate you being here. Talk to me a little bit about, we've got construction that's going to happen from McDermott to Linder, 2019, 2020, as well as construction happening on Locust Grove to Eagle, 2019 to 2020. Are those happening separately from each other or in stereo?
So they are separate projects, and so they do have a little bit of separate guidance with it, depending on how the contractors want to go about it. The first project, Locust Grove to Eagle, is going to be administered by ITD, and so we're going to have a lot more control of the details of how that's going to go down. The other contract is part of the STAR agreement with Costco, and there, the contracting language, it's a little bit more flexible in terms of what the contractor's going to be. We are still administering that, what that contract is, and we'll be directing it, but it's just a little more squishy in terms of ITD's oversight. Why we're going to be doing those things or what's happening, 2019 this year, it's going to be primarily irrigation work while the water's out of the canals. Roadwork itself isn't really going to hit until 2020.
Mr. President, follow-up. Share then with us just a little bit about, I don't know, from an ITD perspective, is it best that all that construction's happening at the same time? I assume hearing from our residents, they always get frustrated that there's no way to kind of work around road construction. So from your perspective, what's the route that you guys are going to prefer to take and maybe share with us a little bit about what we're doing to educate our citizens so they know, they see one project, that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be other projects that are going to be happening right around the same time?
Yeah, thank you, Member Cavanagh. So we also have, I believe it's being displayed, yes, right here. This is a graphic that we put together in conjunction with the Ada County Highway District, because they're also going to be doing some projects in that area. What it comes down to is that these improvements are needed today. And so being able to fund them and construct them now is going to serve the people that use those facilities that much quicker. It does create a headache in the short term that is perhaps a bigger headache, because you're going through six miles of construction. However, it's that compared to, do you want to be in continual construction on the corridor? The other corridors to be considering are going to be State Street, Highway forty-four, or I-84, the other major east-west commuter routes. We're not going to be doing as much major construction, particularly on Highway forty-four during this time, because that will be an alternative for people to use to stay out of construction. I will note as well, during construction, we will not be increasing the traffic problems of what it is currently during the commute time. So right now, this is one lane in each direction. We're going to preserve one lane in each direction during construction.
I didn't know that. That's great. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Ms. Mylum.
Thank you for your presentation, and looking through this earlier, my main question was regarding the timeline. You kind of touched on that a little bit, but there, you've got this section, and this section, then this section, and it just doesn't seem to make sense, especially since two of those projects are, or sections, are both in agreement with Linder Village, but they're two years apart. And don't they have to have it totally completed prior to them opening anything? Are they that far out?
Thank you, Member Mylum. So the agreement that we have with Linder Village is a two-phase agreement. They're required to have phase one complete, which is the 2020 construction. That's going to be from Linder to Meridian Road. That needs to be complete before they can have a permit for occupancy. However, the twenty-one, that's still going to be a requirement, but they're able to operate before that point in time. And that was an agreement reached due to the feasibility and all the details that go into a widening project like this. It's still a very aggressive schedule for them to complete, but it's more reasonable, and it allowed us to actually have the agreement in the first place. Otherwise, we would have been required to look at state funds from our existing formula, and it would have delayed that project or potentially delayed other needed projects here in the valley. By having the STAR's agreement and working with developers to do that, it's a great, everyone wins, because it's an alternative funding source. So the dollars that were previously allocated to that project from our state funding can be allocated in other areas.
Mr. President, follow-up. And I agree with you. It is a great program, but the bottleneck that this is creating, I mean, for at least a year, it just looks like it's going to be hell in both directions, and people, you know, you're traveling from this way, and all of a sudden you're crammed, and there are people traveling from this way, and all of a sudden they're crammed. And it's just that one mile, there's no way to get it done sooner to not, to save?
Yeah, Member Mylum, and I do appreciate the question and the concern, and it's something that we looked at. This will be essentially a continual construction zone for six miles between late this fall and in 2020 into 2021. Will it cause some temporary headaches? There's no doubt. We recognize that, and as Member Cavanagh brought up, the public information campaign that we have prepared around that is going to be significant to prepare people for those short-term headaches. This was the way that we were able to move things along in the fastest way. It really couldn't have been expedited anymore. And before the STAR agreements with Linder Village, we were in a situation where there was a two-mile weird bottleneck of sorts, because we didn't have that agreement, but we did have the Costco agreement. So again, while there was the ideal staging of using state funding formula, one mile per year for the next seven years, because funds were available sooner and because the need is already here, we wanted to move forward as quickly as possible.
Counsel, any other questions? Must be the Band-Aid being pulled off quicker, I guess.
Yes.
So thank you for being here for the update and explanation. I appreciate it. Bryant, thanks for being here as well.
Thank you, President Borton. Thank you, counsel.
Thanks. Item C on the agenda, the fixed route transit, VRT. Welcome, thanks for coming.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. My name's Stephen Hunt. I'm the principal planner at Valley Regional Transit, and it's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon to talk about transit services in Meridian and across the Treasure Valley. So you may recall, last fall, we were, I was in front of the council talking about potential changes in 2020, and we were requested to work with, with staff to develop some concepts about what we might be able to do this coming fiscal year, and so I'm here to report on that. But first, I wanted to start by talking about the annual report. So this 2019 annual report was the first year that we were able to complete an annual report that includes the performance measures that are in the long-range, or the transportation, the transit plan for growth called Valley Connect 2.0. And what I wanted to highlight here is that we were able to develop this dashboard that looks at several different measures of productivity, service hours, in an effort to improve our transparency with all of the jurisdictions that we serve, and make sure that you all feel the value, understand the value that we're able to bring to the community. It also established a baseline for some of the other measures that were important in Valley Connect, namely proximity to transit. So how many people are close to transit? How many jobs are close to transit? And what does that mean for us as we grow? Because within, within Valley Connect 2.0 is, is the expectation and plan to quadruple the amount of transit service in the valley, which again, is what's expect, what the region has been planning for with communities in motion and where we should be by 2025. And what this report shows is how far behind we are on some of those measures. And so we know that some of these performance measures don't, don't look very good for transit right now, but it's intended to establish a baseline from which we are growing.
Stephen?
Yes?
What do those acronyms mean? FR, DR, ST, VP?
So each of those stand for different modes. So FR is fixed route, DR is demand response, ST is specialized transportation, VP is van pool, and BS is bike share, which I'm sure was clear. In the report, there, there is a table that goes along with each one of those acronyms to make it easier for, for individuals to understand what's going on in that. And the intent of a dashboard like this is to, at a glance, be able to get a sense of how, how are things moving? And some of the takeaways that we gathered from that are that ridership is up. It's up because of the investments that were made largely around fixed, around the Boise State Shuttle. They were able to increase service there, and that, and there was a strong ridership response to that. However, there are other parts of the, of the fixed route system that were down. So when we look at Ada County fixed route service provided by Valley Ride, that was down just a little bit. Canyon County was, was up some. And so we're able to look at each of those components and understand what, what is the trends. Ride-share services, which is another area that the city of Meridian participates in substantially with Harvest Transit, is up and, and up substantially. On-time performance is an area that we, we knew going into this was going to be a challenge, and we have better data now and are continuing to use that data to understand, how do we adjust schedules throughout the day to improve the customer experience and make sure that people are able to get where they're going on time? So that's something that we'll be measuring and, and adjusting over time. And as I mentioned earlier, the establishing the baseline, it, it did highlight some of the weaknesses of the existing transit service. We, we were talking about some of the other transportation concerns in the valley, like what's going on on 2021, and unfortunately, transit can't do anything right now for that, because there is no transit service on, on Chindon Boulevard. So what we're trying to do is expand the, the opportunities that people have to take transit, so that it can be an alternative when people are traveling, not just during construction periods, but also for their day-to-day travel. I mentioned ride-share services as one of the bright spots in, in the report, and certainly, if you look at Harvest Transit, its growth, one hundred and sixty-four percent growth over 2017 in terms of the rides provided. Rides to Wellness is another program that operates within the city of Meridian, making connections to St. Luke's, and that's been a success both on St. Luke's side as well as our side in terms of the number of people that are serviced and the people who are able to, to get their medical attention that they need. The other thing that's happened since then is, in January, the end of January, we implemented a service change across Ada and Canyon County. Most of those changes happened in Ada County with services in the city of Boise, but we also talked last time I was here about changes to Route forty-two, which connects Meridian to, to downtown, well, not to downtown, but to Boise, Town Square Mall, as well as to Nampa. And a couple of the changes that I wanted to highlight that we mentioned last time is that it does provide new connections, both to the crossroads, the growing developments there on Overland, making all-day connections to Wahoo's, Roaring Springs, Galaxy, as well as the development between Meridian Road and Eagle Road on, on Overland, so where Mountain View High School is and the apartments that are there, opening up opportunities for people to travel on transit in that area. It's early, we've been operating just over a month on that, so we'll be tracking ridership there and working with your staff to, to encourage riders, encourage the residents of Meridian to use the services that's there, maybe using more next-door or other ways of getting the word out about, about the opportunity that there is to take the forty-two downtown or out to, out to Nampa, to CWI, or to the St. Luke's in Nampa. So that's another thing that's connected with that. The Cherry Lane, St. Luke's there in Nampa is an opportunity connected by that route.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Yes.
What's the Franklin? Sorry, Dean, I'm sorry. What's the Franklin?
The Franklin? The Franklin is the development that's there next to the, it's near Ten Mile and Franklin Road. It's just a little bit farther west. It's an apartment complex there, next to, I, I don't know the name of the church, but there's a large church there as well on the corner, and it's just to the west of the, of that church.
Great, thanks.
It's the Franklin.
I love the hoop.
So what we were asked to do last fall was work with staff on identifying what the next set of priorities coming out of Valley Connect would, 2.0 would be for Meridian. So I just wanted to reiterate, the, the purpose of Valley Connect 2.0 is how do we increase transit accessibility? How do we make it easier for people to get where they're going? And one of the things that we really focused on in Valley Connect 2.0 was, was providing that freedom. And this image again is, is showing the number of places or the, the areas that somebody could get with that network in fifteen, thirty, forty-five, and sixty minutes on transit from, from the village, which right now has no service. So if you were to look at that today, it would be just a ball right around the village, however far you could walk in that amount of time. But what we're, what we are trying to do is show, is make Meridian the center of the valley, also from a transit perspective, making sure that people can connect to Boise, to Eagle, and to Nampa. And so our first step was to say, what can we do from that whole network? What are the first steps that we can do in terms of providing high-quality fixed route service in, in Meridian? We wanted to make sure that that service did make connections within Meridian, as well as to regional destinations, that it would be as productive as possible and also be able to be scaled. And so, working with staff, we also met with, with the Transportation Committee and the, the Meridian Development Corporation Property and Parking Committee, as we developed these concepts, and, and those were all positive conversations. What we looked at was connecting really kind of edge-to-edge of Meridian through downtown, through the downtown core, so starting out at Ten Mile, working through something along Franklin, through the downtown core of Meridian, extending out to Eagle Road, going to the village, terminating there at the village, which provided us the opportunity to connect a lot of destinations along the core, through the core of Meridian, which are the little sunspots identified there on the map. And we worked, again, with staff and our own staff to identify residential and job centers in that corridor, and are happy that our conversations, initial conversations with stakeholders have been generally positive. We've been able to begin outreach to those individuals, and tonight, actually, we're joined by Lindsay Bauschur and Heath Van Batten from the Meridian Development Downtown Business Association, and they're here, and as they have heard about the project, been able to, to poll their members and have had a positive response from them as well. Because again, what we're talking about is how do we get more people into downtown, through downtown, and connect them to where they're trying to go. It was an interesting conversation, again, with the Property and Parking Committee last month, because there, you know, they're talking about, how do you get people in and out of a constrained area? And when you're looking at the constraints that come with large developments in downtown, whether they're parking, sorry, whether they are apartment complexes or, or employment in downtown, it becomes an issue of how do you make room for that, for that development? So with this concept, you are able to connect, actually, I mentioned earlier, the forty-two, Route forty is another route that connects to downtown Boise. It goes by the crossroads there, I'm sorry, the Ten Mile Crossing, which would be potentially one of the termini for, for this route, where you could connect to services that go on into downtown. You also, so you have the regional connections if you wanted to travel farther to west into Nampa. You can make that on that end. And on the eastern end, getting as far as the village makes it easier for us to extend services either down Fairview or potentially down Ustick, or make other connections with the Ada County services to connect to Boise and continue farther west, which is one of the things that we hear a lot about from our current riders. When we developed Valley Connect 2.0, Meridian was one of the higher, was, was one of the highest destinations that were identified as places that people wanted to go on transit. And that was true, the number of people who said, I want to get to Meridian, were more than the people who responded from Meridian, which means people outside the community are wanting to get here and can't get here on transit, and that's something we hear about from the current residents in Boise who are trying to use service, and they say, why, why can't we have service that extends farther out to the west? And we recognize that as one of the, one of the deficiencies of the network. So we're excited to be here to talk to you guys again about the opportunity of expanding that, expanding that service. And again, are encouraged by the response that we've had, both from private sector and stakeholders in the, in the corridor. So we also were looking at, at the costs, and so when we, we wanted to be able to grow into Valley Connect 2.0, which by the time, if, if we talk about the growth scenario in Valley Connect, I believe it was over three million dollars in annual service costs that would be representative of the amount of service that's in the city of Meridian. So we wanted to say, how can we begin down that, down that path without biting off the whole thing at once? So a concept like this, if we're talking about peak hour service, maybe fourteen trips a day, so that means every thirty minutes from six to nine in the morning, just representative, and then again, in the, in the PM commute period, that would be about three thousand hours, cost about three hundred thousand dollars. We would be generating additional revenue from the fares that we collect on that service, and so there would be some directly generated revenue, and we would be looking for finding the, the local portion to sustain the rest of that service. And so we'd be looking somewhere between two hundred and eighty and three hundred thousand dollars in, in revenue. If you wanted to provide that service all day long, so making, this, this service would go by Meridian High School, for example, it goes by several other destinations along Pine, so if you wanted to have service that ran throughout the day to make it more, more accessible, we would be looking at something about seven hundred thousand dollars, again, taking out what we would be generating from fares, which is another thing that we're reviewing right now about how we can increase that, that amount. But for planning purposes, we're sticking at our current fare box recovery, which is about eight percent. So that, that becomes the service side. The other thing that we talked about, though, is that we're right now capital constraints, there are constraints on our capital. In other words, we don't have enough buses to be adding service in the middle of the peak period when all of our, when all of our buses are already on the road. And so in order to provide peak hour service, we would be needing to expand our fleet. And so when we think about, how do we phase services in? We can think about talking a consistent contribution over several years, and you start with your capital funding, and then that, as, as you purchase those capital assets, you can transition the, those resources over into, into providing service. And so it provides, when we think about what we can do with the capital, that also, we want to use this as a way to enhance our fleet or move our fleet into, into the next generation of transit service vehicles. There's a lot going on in that space right now, whether we're talking about electric vehicles or even autonomous vehicles, things that we can do to, how do we make the transit service match the community better? When we talk about electric, it's not just because it's cool, but it's also because it mixes better with people and traffic, because you don't have the exhaust. If you're talking about serving downtown Meridian and they have, let's say, patio restaurants and people out on the street, if you don't have the exhaust or the bus going by there, it's a more pleasant experience. And, and it's the way that we can also lower the costs ongoing. Electric vehicles have lower operating, well, lower maintenance costs, and when we have an area like we do with relatively low power costs, it can, it can also work to our advantage long-term for operating expenses. So those are all things that we're trying to work on and want to use this opportunity to say, how can we jump, how can we make this an investment in the future of providing higher-quality transportation options to the residents of, of Meridian? So when we talk about capital funding, we costed out a couple of different options. We would need two additional vehicles, and if we use, so CNG, that stands for compressed natural gas, that's the type of vehicle that we use today, and they run between four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. That's where we get the ninety thousand dollars. Electric buses are about twice, twice as expensive. There are other opportunities, though, that are available to, to us if we chose, choose to go that with competitive grant opportunities to, to lower those, the out-of-pocket costs anyways from locals on, if we wanted to pursue an option like that. anyways, from locals on, if we wanted to pursue an option like that. We'd also be looking to improve the pedestrian environment, add shelters, make it easier for people to wait and and take transit services. So, we've identified a line item for that, as well as making it accessible for people with wheelchair, with ADA pads. We want to make it a real asset to the places that we're going. So, thinking about a station maybe at the crossroads, a station in downtown Meridian, a station at the village where people can, where those become focal points for the community, and you can get on transit and and get where you're going. And so, we end up, this chart again, is just to lay out what the range of costs could be with capital funding, for capital funding, and the types of avenues we would pursue in terms of of bringing additional revenues to the table through competitive grant processes and FTA federal dollars. So, with that, I wanted to go back with what the proposed schedule was when we began this last fall, was to work, establish the scope and purpose of the project last fall, work with with staff to develop budget and capital needs and opportunities through January, February, beginning collecting initial feedback from jurisdictions and stakeholders. And then here we are in March, proposing that to committees and to the council, reporting back on that. And where we would like to go next is begin holding some open houses or collecting general public, general public feedback on the concept and and get a sense from the public about what their thoughts are for expanding transit service in in Meridian, and in particular on these concepts. So, the, what we wanted to discuss tonight is if there's any support for VRT from the Meridian Council on on VRT soliciting public input on these concepts and working further with with stakeholders on on bringing fixed route transit into Meridian in a real way. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Great presentation. So, if you go back a couple slides, do one more. So,
That one?
Yeah, the that, this one and the one that follows. So, if, in this scenario with this fixed route, if the city were to go forward with two compressed compressed natural gas buses, it's a couple of years away at best, it's competing, well, 18 to 24 months, perhaps?
Right, for the for delivery of the vehicles.
Correct. Which means probably the service is 18 to 24 months.
Correct. Unless we found other ways to use existing fleet.
Gotcha. And the cost for it is that range, $230,000 at least, and up to the fully-loaded cost if we don't get any federal funds.
That's what's shown here, yes.
So, okay. And if, whatever path that is chosen, is that a path that you commit to, obviously not knowing if you're going to get any federal funding, it's now 18 months down the road, and turns out it doesn't go forward, now the community's left swallowing the rest of the bill? Or can you find out earlier on in the process?
So, right, you would you would find out earlier on in the process, I mean, you'd make an application for federal funding, and if those were realized, then you could apply the local dollars to that federal funds and be able to continue the process. I mean, so the the 18 months would be kind of as you're doing the procurement, and and then and then you'd have the vehicles. So, ideally, something like this could be structured, where if there was a commitment for a certain dollar amount from the city of Meridian, and then we would talk about, this is the, this is the plan for how we would be using that those dollars. And then you would be able to structure, if if you had, and so our assumption would include federal federal funds or not, and in the case that you didn't have those, how would you how would you be using those dollars in the absence of federal funds? And so, you, the expectation is that we would be able to structure that entire program.
Is is one of the options, if at all? So, you commit, in that hypothetical, you commit $228,000, you apply for the federal funding, federal funding falls through completely, can you withdraw the 228? Or is the city, I know the answer that you want, I understand, but...
We want to use that money to serve the community as best we can, right? And so, if the, but I would, I would have to believe that we could track that those dollars, and how and when those dollars change hands is another thing that we would work out. We would need to be able to show that that a community is committed to providing that match. We don't, I don't think we have to have the dollars in the envelope with the application, right? But we do need to know how it would come together.
And have the commitment?
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President?
Smiling.
Got a whole bunch of them. So, we met before and talked about this.
Yes.
So, I have a couple of questions, I guess, back to what we had discussed in our in our meeting before. We had talked about CWI, we had talked about Boise making a connection coming west to Meridian. And so, I didn't hear either one of those in your presentation. You'd start there.
Right. So, we have begun conversations with the city of Boise about how we could extend service to to the village, so that you could continue, because it would be ideal if you could continue service or connect Boise residents to service in Meridian, so they could get to jobs and and opportunities here in the city. And so, those are, those are active conversations. And again, one thing that I think we would, as we as we went further with putting this project together, be included in that in that program, saying, what we're trying to do is connect all these dots. And so, talking about extending service down, either down Fairview or down another route to to
East Street.
Yeah.
You just haven't had gotten the answer from them?
Well, so, this is, this is where things get a little bit challenging in terms of schedule, and we are actively talking to the city of Boise about what their appetite is for and what their priority priorities are for transit investments. And right now, their investments aren't looking towards Meridian, they're looking more towards State Street, Fairview certainly. But if we can talk about extending that service down Fairview, I think they they could be open to it, particularly if there's, if there's a reason to go there from their perspective, which would be additional service and connections from Meridian, into Meridian.
Right.
President?
People from Meridian going to Boise.
Absolutely.
Then to go there to the mall or whatever.
Yeah. It makes a much stronger case for them to understand, like, yeah, Meridian's is is committed to making transit work and to be part of part of their community, and so it makes sense to extend service farther out, make that connection.
And I don't, I'm, don't take this wrong, I still can't tell if you've had this conversation with them.
We have.
Or you're going to have this conversation, because you're talking as if they might, they should probably be interested. But if you've had the conversation, seems like you'd have more of it.
We have started that conversation, but there's no commitment from them about where they're where they would be prioritizing their dollars as yet.
It might, to add to that, Caleb?
Yeah, I was gonna, so I have had a conversation with Karen Gallagher at the city of Boise. What I haven't gone into the same stage as Stephen is that I haven't committed anything because we haven't touched base with council yet. So, we haven't really put a lot of resources towards coordinating with Boise until we got at least a general head nod, yeah, let's pursue this further, before we had something that didn't really have council support. So, I have talked to staff at city of Boise, they're tracking this meeting today, and I told them I would follow up and say, yeah, there's some general support for this, what might this look like? Mark Swinney, also with CWI, we have a meeting with him on Monday. I don't know if he's the right person to talk to about this or not, but I'm going to ask him, who's the right person, if not him, to start having this conversation. As Stephen had in one of his first slides, that 42 already sort of ties in, and that's one of the reasons why this potential route concept starts there, is there is already sort of that tie-in, but we could make that more robust. If there's even more collaboration with said CWI, and they're more of an active partner in this potentially, to have this route be something, you know, further down Franklin. So, that one, I haven't had conversations with him yet, but I intend to. Again, wanted to have this meeting with you all first before we got too far out ahead of it, and then you heard back from people in the community, hey, your staff's talking to us about, and you're like, what, what? We didn't know what was going on. So, we want to have this conversation first before we really go and start to have further conversations.
Thank you for that, Karen.
And the, if I understand, your ask today is, is the council comfortable going forward to receive the public input? It's not necessarily a commitment to a route or the financial commitment, but
That's correct.
Just gathering more data.
That's correct. We we just wanted to make sure, because it is a significant potential investment, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't too far ahead of of Meridian City Council on saying, us leading the charge and saying, this is something that everybody is on board with, and then you guys be stuck saying, wait, we, we haven't really been thinking about or comfortable with this yet, this concept. So, yes, being able to be more public about this concept and 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 have the conversations that, that Caleb was mentioning. I would make one other comment, though, about the potential synergies, is that the city of Boise is interested as well in pursuing different electric technologies. And so, when we think about how, like, can can we work together on advancing the the fleet? That's, that becomes also of interest to them. And so, this is, this is the conversation we're trying to be able to coordinate with them.
Mr. President?
Smiling.
So, to that, if we say we we support the electric vehicle, are we designated those electric vehicles, or are we buying two electric vehicles that are put out in the fleet, and then we end up with CNG?
With the CNG. And so, we we do schedule vehicles, and so, those would have to work with operations to make sure how those how those are provided. And it is part of a fleet. I guess I'm being, giving you a wishy-washy answer here. We'd have to work out those details, so, yeah.
Okay, Mr. President, sorry, I still had a little bit more further of that. So, something else that we had discussed, and I guess this kind of, probably your answer is basically the same as maybe premature to the process, but we had talked about talking with the other stakeholders, employers, and you said you started conversations with them. I guess, have you gotten any response to, first of all, service hours? Because maybe this doesn't need to be a prime-time service. It could be an afternoon service or an evening, you know, there are different schedules if, unless employers really need, think that they need that service to get employees to work at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the morning.
Right.
And then also, obviously, if we're doing it based on their needs, if they're willing to have any financial participation.
Right. And so, we haven't had those conversations specifically yet, and what we're trying to do with with this is set up, set kind of some parameters. Because whether we talk about the six hours being from 6:00 to 9:00, and then from 3:00 to 6:00, what doesn't need to be defined, what is, what we are trying to talk about is the the amount of resource, right? So, we're saying roughly two buses for six hours a day, and we will work with the community to identify the best six hours that we could provide that service, with the assumption that it would be during the peak commute period. If it's not, then the capital requirements are are different, potentially go, well, at least the fleet requirements go away. If you provided the service in the middle of the day,
Right.
Then you wouldn't need, you wouldn't need two additional vehicles. So, that's one thing.
That's kind of where I was going with that.
Right. Right. So, again, we're trying to make sure that we have, we have some support from the city council before going too far down the road of of talking to other stakeholders and understanding what the what the possibilities are.
Okay, Mr. President, I'll be done. I'm, since that's what you're looking for, I'm in support of the minimum with electric vehicles. Either way, but I would say that this is going to be another two years down the road. I mean, that's kind of the way we're moving. By then, they might need me to be autonomous, so at least electric. And I don't really feel, I'm not comfortable committing to, like, sure, we want that up to the max, but I'm, I'm comfortable committing to the minimum. If that doesn't work out, we don't get any federal funding, then I would like to look at a daytime route, maybe, trying, trying something, because I, I like the route, and I think, you know, going around through the village, I think would be a good, a good route to go, but maybe just different hours where you don't have to have the capital outlay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cather?
Couple other clarifying questions. First, Stephen, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, when the, if a city contributes dollars for the acquisition of buses, they're not our buses, they're VRT's buses. We don't have authority over which buses are used and when. I mean, it's, it's your guys' equipment that we're just purchasing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Follow-up question, then, Mr. President. Stephen, I think your previous slide shows operational costs, the service costs. Is that service cost taken with the assumption that we're using CNG buses, electric buses, or it's just a hybrid model?
So, this is using our current kind of hourly hourly rate planning level estimates of $100 an hour. So, it, and that would be enough to cover either CNG or electric. So, it's, at this point...
Mr. President, I guess, then clarifying question. From a city's ongoing service cost contribution model, where the city moves forward with a CNG bus or an electric bus, from a cost perspective, seems to be irrelevant.
We haven't baked any savings that might come in from the from electric into the cost yet.
Fair enough. Thanks. Mr. President, just for for feedback, I'm, I'm not opposed to you continuing this process and seeking feedback from the public. I'm one who supports public transit. I think it's something that, we as a city, we're having these very expensive conversations because we've waited way too long to really be investing in in public transit. I think VRT's been able to demonstrate that even in a growing economy, people are still looking for public transit options. And so, I'm supportive of of exploring this. I guess one other question I may have, Mr. President, is, Stephen, if the city were to explore a fixed route, this is fixed route expansion model that you're proposing, do we expect to see growth or reduction in usage of our rideshare models, specifically Harvest Transit and the Rides to Wellness programming?
Well, I think that you would continue to see growth in those models as well, in part because they're serving a different kind of market, and the the connections they're making may or may not be along this particular corridor. Ideally, where we'd like to go with that is is a tighter connection between the the shared ride models and fixed route service, where they could, where they could work together. So, as an example, the Route 42, which used to serve, which used to come close to the St. Luke's Meridian facility, by close, I mean Franklin and Eagle, we don't go there anymore, we're over on Overland, but there is a stop at Silverstone, and that could be the opportunity for for somebody to be able to make that last connection to to St. Luke's on a shared ride model. And so, that's, as we look down the road about how we're trying to make those connections, and how something like the shared ride investments could support fixed route service, that's where we'd be looking to to make those kinds of efficiencies.
So, Mr. President, from my perspective, I want to make sure we're using our dollars as efficiently as possible, and, again, in terms of of a map and places that we serve, that we're not over-duplicating our efforts just to make sure that every corner's touched, that we're real strategic about that. Just for for what it's worth, I appreciate the conversation between you and Council President Borton. To me, if if the city's going to move forward, we're moving forward under the assumption, at least for me, that there's the federal match. That, to me, is the only way I, as one, could get real supportive about that. And so, I appreciate all the work that VRT does, and you guys make a system work with not enough funding, with a lot of dedicated employees, hopes and dreams and and duct tape, and you should be commended for that. But looking at it from from a city perspective, I don't think that I could support spending a million dollars on a on a busing program when we have so many other needs from our city. So, to me, before, or we have that conversation about city contributing, you know, their portion, there's got to be some greater clarity about the federal match.
Thank you.
Stephen, I appreciate you coming. We'll kind of wrap this up and give you some collective direction. The request was, want to go out and gather some more public input, it will then come back to us. We understand the somewhat, the sideboards financially that might come with it. So, anyone on council have any concern with proceeding forward, given Stephen direction to gather additional public input to help inform our decision? Looks like you've got some unanimous direction to continue to gather. I think it's going to help us make the best decision as well. So, I appreciate you doing it in the order and pace that you are. It helps us make the right decisions, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stephen.
Let us be here.
Appreciate it.
Mr. President, before we move on, just maybe a couple of, so there's the schedule again. So, thank you for for that, and I'll come alongside Stephen and the rest of the RT staff as we try to, as we start to reach out to some of these potential stakeholders that were that were listed on previous slides. I want to kind of tie this into the budget process, and I heard some comments down there, and I think that, that I wanted to just, I don't know how many of those meetings we'll have, but enhancement forms are going to be due here very soon. So, there'll be something there as a placeholder that I'm sure will be the topic of discussion. But I just wanted to disclose that, too, that, I'm not asking you for a thumbs up or a thumbs down, only to talk more, but kind of depending on where that goes with some of the conversations we have, there will be something that could be, we'll have to be specific yet, we may need to to bob and weave a little bit as we get further along this process and start to really talk about the budget for for '20, knowing that unless it's middle of the day, we probably aren't actually running buses on the ground until 2021, but maybe start to invest in some capital potentially. So, just 2021, but maybe start to invest in some capital potentially. So just wanted to put that out there, too, that with some maybe caveats about, about pending federal grant match stuff, but thank you.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Item 8A is a follow-up. Rich, we spoke several weeks ago, kind of a code enforcement 101. Rich Everett provided some direction. It then culminated in some recommendations and maybe opportunities to improve some of our codes and assist with some enforcement. So this is the, the follow-up report and feedback and maybe some, it sounds like some recommendations on how we can do things.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me this afternoon.
Thanks.
Hello to everyone. We're going to go over quite a few of the, just an overview, a real broad level, to keep things quick, just to get you up to speed and provide the update on where we're at.
And while you get started on it, kind of the direction of this, as we finish this presentation, we might have a, a code item or two that you are interested in exploring further. None of, there's no language proposed yet, nothing's been drafted. If anything were to occur on any of these, it would be merely direction from us to Rich and the legal counsel to explore how we might create language to accomplish that goal. But today's is just to get the thumbs up or thumbs down on some of these proposals you're making.
Great. And everything that we go over today will be available in ordinance form later for review, if, if we chose to go that direction. So as President Borton mentioned, provided an update or an overview of the code enforcement operations and last fall. During that meeting, Councilman Cavanagh had made an inquiry as to whether the city had current codes or practices that were making it difficult for code enforcement to do its job. That inquiry sparked a review of the city codes and the Unified Development Code. I want to thank the council for that because it became a great learning opportunity for my staff and I to really dive into word for word of some of the things that we were dealing with and figure out if it was something that we were creating by not having an accurate interpretation of the code, or if there seriously was a problem. So each of my staff was directed to identify what they perceived as a problem and then also to provide a remedy to that problem. We got together as a group and were able to collaborate and go over the proposed remedies and hopefully forecast what any of those changes might cause i- in the future. Each of those remedies wound up being a recommendation to amend the code. We met with city attorney staff and folks from planning to go over them, so it wasn't just a biased, one-sided review. We wanted to make sure we had multi-level input and from different facets to make sure that it wasn't just a head in the sand approach, essentially. So the first code we looked at was Meridian City Code 722 that addresses prohibited parking on city streets. Right now, there is not necessarily a loophole, but there's a provision in the current language that allows for occupied vehicles to be parked in areas that we don't want them. Front of fire hydrants, at crosswalks, entrances to private residences or to commercial places. So this would just be an update to that wording to make it apply to everyone, that they want to be able to park there. The next was parking on public streets. Right now, our city code doesn't adequately address the use of fictitious or altered plates that are displayed on vehicles that are parked. City code would, if this was to put in place, would read more in line with the similar state code statute that is already in place and commonplace. It just, this would be applying to vehicles that are parked, not actually driving down the road. We talked about the procedures that are outlined in the UDC, the Unified Development Code, that give code enforcement its authority and direction and some procedural outlines. And we noticed that there's some difference between Meridian City Code and Unified Development Code when it comes to providing service. When we're providing service for notice of violations, this recommendation would be to make the Unified Development Code read more in line with the existing city code. So we're doing it the same on both levels, regardless of the code that we're enforcing. Outdoor lighting, this was brought to our attention and has been for the last couple of years, just because technology's increasing and lighting retrofits are becoming more and more affordable, and they're more and more powerful. And we recognize that the current code doesn't adequately address light trespass. And it also provides a very broad exemption to different types of light fixtures that allow this property owner to impact the quality of life of the neighboring property owner, and there's nothing we can do about it because of the exemptions. So narrowing some of those exemptions. And then also talking about not only what unit of measure to use when we're taking those readings, but how to obtain them, so there's a standard application and just to increase the fairness to the folks that we serve. Some of the diagrams that are used in that section as a reference are, they're dated and they're of low quality. They're very difficult to use when we are using them as a reference to educate our public. So it would be in, just an update on those also. Outdoor storage was another thing that we looked into. The current outdoor storage language is written to address commercial properties, but the section applies to residential properties also. It's very specific in wording and will just be a slight change to make it more, not more applicable, it already applies, but just subwording that would reference things that occur at residential uses and it's not just commercial. And then we looked at the traveling sleeping quarters, which is the Unified Development Codes, fancy way of saying recreational vehicles, motorhomes, things of that nature. There's a little inconsistency in the definition and the title as far as verbiage or language that's used. So just to clean that up, and then while we were in there, we realized we need to get ahead the curve because we're fielding complaints or inquiries about the tiny house movement and mobile tiny homes, and our current code doesn't identify those or provide a specific definition as to what a tiny house or a mobile tiny house is. So making an addition to that. This section, the parking standards, this, this is parking on private property, not on the streets. And it goes back to the same deficiency that we located in the earlier section of the city code about not addressing fictitious plates adequately. And this would just close the gap there and make sure that vehicles that are parked on private property in public view are registered and bring that in line. And so each of those sections, I know that was a quick overview, and that was my intention, to not take up too much of your time, but just to get you up to speed. And then each of those I can bring back to this body in ordinance form after we do the procedural hearings that are necessary to do that for your review or your recommendations for changes. So I'll stand for your questions if you have any.
Rich, that, I don't know why we wouldn't do all of what you proposed. Those are, that was a great succinct explanation.
Thank you.
Couple other comments from what you shared. Really appreciate your focus on fairness and compliance. The goal of this is to enable the public to comply, not have code violations. So any cleanup that makes it easier for everyone to do exactly what they're required, much appreciated. So the focus on fairness is great.
Thank you.
The other thing is there's probably other changes in other areas we can address, but you've got a manageable list here with real change that I would recommend we proceed with these. Work can continue on additional changes down the road, but rather than delay these top ones that, that you've recommended, that if these can move forward and there can be continual discussions on ways to improve other sections. This isn't an exhaustive list necessarily, but.
Yeah, not by any means. And we're just excited to address these initial and to start this process and continue it. So we're constantly refining things and, like you said, in the goal of pursuing fairness and just making things as clear as possible. So we're not having to pursue violations, we're just educating folks.
Is it, is it your request of council today that after this discussion, you received some direction and feedback to go forward, draft the actual language, bring it back for ultimate review and approval?
I believe that would be the next step in the process, and as long as that's in line with the procedural requirements that Mr. Neri can chime in on.
Mr. President, members of the council, so some of these code changes are city code, not UDC code. So the process is much faster for that. So if that's the direction desire of the council to look at draft language here in the next month or so, we can probably make that happen. UDC's a little different process, goes through the planning staff, has to go through the P&amp;Z Commission first. So again, we can begin both processes, but they just, one takes a little bit more time. Thanks, Bill. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cather.
Couple of questions, couple of comments. First, Rich, thanks. Help me understand, though, fictitious plates. And I saw that in the presentation, you touched on it twice. Is this a growing issue where people are having fake license plates?
So.
How's that impacting your job?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Cavanagh. It's, a fictitious plate can be just that. It can be what we think of as somebody made or fabricated a license plate at all. So it can be a license plate that's been altered in a way where someone else's registration sticker was stolen and then placed on their license plate. So at a glance, it looks like it's a currently registered plate or it's, it's been altered in a way, or the registration paperwork has been altered in a way. So all of those things fall into fictitious plates. Where my staff is seeing it is folks are using plates from a registered vehicle to place it on a vehicle that's parked in their driveway. But it doesn't apply to, or sorry, it's not registered to that vehicle. That license plate that they're using is not assigned to that vehicle. If that were driving down the roadway, that would be a violation of Idaho State Code, and it wouldn't be a problem. It could be addressed by an officer that observed it. When it's sitting in your driveway and you do that, the, the language that we currently have in the UDC, the Unified Development Code, doesn't allow us to effectively address it. There are other violations that might be in play, but specifically using a plate of another vehicle, is it something that we can enforce? And it brings that person into, I would say, quasi-compliance by the way the current language reads in the development code.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cather.
So I think those, when those ordinance language comes back, I think that's the appropriate time to kind of maybe dig into each of those. I appreciate the Cliff Notes version on fictitious plates. You know, I think that we can, we can run a dual path where bring back the city codes as quickly as possible, run through the UDC changes. One, I guess I'd like to see included in the conversation, and this is because it's come from multiple constituents, is the frustration about being cited about having a boat or a trailer or their camper, they're cited, it's parked in their driveway. They can park it on the street for three days, no big deal, but they can't park it in their own driveway. And for me, it's helping to see the, the life safety issues, that, that, why we have that and how we address those life safety issues by not allowing people to park their own property on their driveway. So however that comes back, that's one that I'd like to see further discussion on as well.
Okay.
Just so I get educated.
Sure, we'll definitely look into that.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mylan.
I just had a quick question. So based on what you said, it's, it already is illegal to have a non-registered vehicle in your driveway. So if I have a, a car that doesn't run, I have to register anyway if it's in my driveway?
Correct. So the Unified Development Code prevents you from storing an unregistered or inoperable vehicle within public view. And that driveway is an area that is identified in the code as the required street yard. So anything that's in the street yard is in public view, and it's on the public side of what would most likely be your fence that defined the rear yard from the street yard. And if it's in that street yard and in public view, it, it can't be either of the two things that you said.
But if it's registered, who cares if it runs? I mean, I mean, obviously, if it's a half of a car that somebody's working on, that's probably what that was intended for. But if my car is broken and it's in my driveway.
Sure. I think the, and I'm only, I'm only able to provide my opinion on that because I wasn't a part of the body that drafted the wording for that. But I, I believe it was to draw that hard line in the sand because, well, how broke down is your car? Is it, is it, does it just need a battery? Or is it a salvage vehicle that's only in pieces? And it just creates so much, so much wiggle room that it becomes unenforceable. So I think it was probably done to just draw that line and say, if it runs, it can be there. If it doesn't, it can't. And now we're not doing door-to-door checks and asking, will you please start your vehicle and drive it down the road? There has to be a fairly, yeah, there has to be a fairly blatant display that would lead us to believe that it doesn't run. It's missing its tires or, you know, it's, it's wrecked or something of that nature. We don't pursue it unless it's obvious to us that that vehicle's not going to move down the roadway.
Somebody's complained about it, obviously.
Or it's, it's been there for nine years and it's never moved, you know? We'll look into something like that. But we don't knock door-to-door to make sure that your vehicle runs.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Sure.
Counsel, any concern with going forward as recommended?
Sound good.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great presentation. Great. That was good. I would not want to follow that. That was, wow. Next up, Warren. Item 8B, our engineering fiscal year 2018 closeout presentation. Wow. War is yours, I guess.
Yeah, thanks a lot for that. Council President, members of the council, if you'll indulge me, I'm going to stay sitting. I have an issue with my hip that makes it very painful to get up and sit down and one thing and another.
Don't worry.
So I'm just going to stay here. The rest of the staff will come to the podium. But as required by the city's purchasing policy, the engineering division is going to present our annual project closeout report, which is essentially reporting on all the projects that we completed in this past year. We're going to try and do this as informatively, but as efficiently as we can and make this rather quick. But each project manager is going to come up and present on the project that they managed. There'll be three new faces that you'll see this year, and I want to just take a moment to introduce those. Al Christie is our Transportation Utility Coordinator. He's been here for a while, but this is the first time he's had an opportunity to present in one of these project closeout reports. And Christie is going to, is going to be, Christina, sorry, I got my, my words mixed up here. Christine Keith is one of our staff engineers. This will be her first time presenting. And then Dan Berthie is also our newest staff engineer, and he will be presenting this year. So there's some new faces that you may not have seen before. The rest of the team are seasoned veterans, and they've, they've been here and done this a few times. However, I want to say that I'm very grateful for them and all of their hard work and want you to know that they really do consider it their job to make sure that the citizens of the city of Meridian get quality infrastructure at the, at a fair price. And so they, they work hard at that, and I know they care about that as well. And so we're going to go on and add to the agenda. So Kyle and his team are going to talk a little bit about the water projects first. And then Clint Doleby and his team are going to present on wastewater projects. Al Christie's going to follow up with some streetlight information for you on, on his projects. And then I will wrap things up with kind of an overall perspective of how we did on all the projects this year. And so I'm going to turn the time over to Kyle. We'll, we'll certainly stand for any questions at the end. That might be the most effi- efficient and effective way. But if you have some burning question during the middle, feel free to, to ask us. Kyle?
Thanks, Warren. Welcome.
Mr. President, council members, as the Assistant City Engineer for Water, one of my jobs is to take credit for stuff that other people do, like Dean. And Dean is, Dean is going to present these, all these water system projects that he, he didn't start all these projects, but he finished all these projects. So go ahead, Dean.
Thanks for being here, Dean.
President Borton, members of the council, I'm Dean Stacy, one of the project managers here of the city. So I'm going to start talking about a few of the water projects. And the first one to talk about is Well 22. Well 22 was a, was a, what, we constructed a water treatment facility. The project consisted of demolishing the existing wellhouse. We designed it, constructed a new facility, and installed a new water treatment tank. So during this project, we coordinated with our Parks Department to limit the impact on our park's aesthetics. We kept in contact with our HOA and informed them about the project and wanted to talk to them, make sure that they understood this was not the fire, firehouse being constructed in their park. This project finally enables the full use of this well. Well 22 has been used only as a backup service since its construction in 2002, 2002, due to the water quality. So this project, total cost of this project was 1.68 million, or actually 1.7 million. Next project I had was for constructing a Well 32. The project consisted of designing and constructing test wells, production well, and a pumping facility. This was the third year of, of a three-year project. It also is the second source of water in Zone 5, with the other being recently constructed Well 30. And the purpose of this project was to provide fire flow to enable continued growth in South Meridian. This project, total, total cost was 1.7 million. Next project was PRV abandonment at Kodiak. Little information on this is, as system, system growth has rendered these, A little information on this is as system growth has rendered these PRV locations obsolete, and abandonment removes these assets and ongoing maintenance costs. And abandonment was carried out by our lead construction operator, Chad Castle, and his crew. So with that, we disconnected and removed the equipment out of the vault. We backfilled the vault and filled it with drain rock, and we replaced the paving and landscaping to match existing. Total project cost was $3,700. The next PRV abandonment project that I did was for PRVs 6, 8, and 9. Again, it's the continuation of the... Kind of like a carbon copy of the previous project. Disconnected, removed equipment, backfilled with drain rock, as you can see in the picture here, and replaced paving and landscaping. Total cost for this project was $3,000. Another fun project that I had was for PRV SCADA system upgrades. This was for six locations. PRV SCADA allows water operators to monitor and control these remote sites and to ensure the systems are functioning properly. They also... The upgrades generally include updating the radios and PLCs, which are the programming logic controllers, and bringing the electronics out of the vaults, out of the underground, out of the water. It also improves operator safety and equipment reliability. This project, we designed, demoed, and installed equipment at six locations. We updated the underground equipment and brought it out and into these new above-ground cabinets. Total project cost was $305,000. The next PRV upgrade project I had was for PRVs 14 and 18. This project originally consisted of six PRVs. During the design process, before we got to the construction process, we identified through a review from our Assistant City Engineer that several of these locations were no longer necessary, no need to update them. So we only decided to construct two of them, PRVs 14 and 18. Again, we designed them, demoed the equipment, and then brought them above ground. Total cost was $122,000 on that. The next section we want to talk about is water main extensions replacements. And I have another project in here. First project is Amity and Lender Water Main. This project was to construct 12,560 linear feet of 12-inch water main and install it in Amity Road from Meridian to Lender, north on Lender to Victory, and then east on Victory to tie into existing services there by Kentucky Ridge. This project allows us to improve our water services and also allows us to... For future expansion in South Meridian. Total project cost for this was $1 million.
Next, Dean.
Mr. President, members of council. I'm Brent Blake. I was the project manager for the Water Main Extension Project on Lake Hazel and Locust Grove. This project was also part of the South Meridian Annexation Commitments that the city agreed to in 2016. Project entailed installation or construction and design of approximately 8,400 linear feet of water main along Locust Grove and Lake Hazel Roads. Total project cost was $914,000.
The next project is the Cherry Lane and Bariah PRVs. They were combined in order to make the project more attractive to bidders at a lower cost. The Bariah PRV was a developer-installed vault that needed to be equipped. And the Cherry Lane PRV was an entirely new site that required connection to the water main. Cherry Lane and placement of the vault, as you see in the picture there, in the landscaping berm and site restoration. The completion of these projects was necessary to enable the expansion of Pressure Zone 1, according to the city's master plan. The Pressure Zone shift was completed in June of last summer. And we took 400 existing customers and took them from the existing Pressure Zone 2 and put them in Pressure Zone 1. And that allowed our city to continue expansion to the west. Without that project, we couldn't have done that. Oh, I'm sorry. And the total project cost was $206,000, so.
President Borton, members of the council. My name is Dan Berthi. I was the project manager for the Rose Circle Water Main Replacement Project. This particular project consisted of the construction of approximately 1,600 feet of... Or we replaced approximately 1,600 feet of existing 4-inch with new 8-inch water main. And it was located within the Rose Park Mole Home subdivision. The project was done to help improve water quality within the subdivision and was completed for a total project cost of approximately $280,000.
Council President, members of the council, and Clint Doleby, Assistant City Engineer. We completed two projects at the Wastewater Resource Recovery Facility last year. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to the project manager for the first one.
Come back.
So I'll talk to you about the Werf-Bro Pump Station Upgrades Project. Bro stands for the Boise River Outfall. This pump station upgrades project was done... Consisted of the construction of new structural addition to the existing reuse pump station. It also included the installation of new mechanical piping and electrical and process control equipment, as well as the addition of two new vertical turbine pumps and a sealed water pump station. The project was done to allow for the increased reuse pumping and production capabilities, and was completed for a total cost of approximately $1 million.
Mr. President, members of council. My name is Jared Hale. I was the project manager for the Werf-Territorial Filter Building A Crane, where we installed a half-ton crane and the support structure for approximately $72,000. And we're moving on to our water and sewer extensions with the streetlight improvement projects. You'll notice two of these projects are ACHD co-op projects that were being completed for a while. But these co-op projects take a little while to close out, so I'll present them to you now. The ACHD Eustic-Lender to Locust Grove. We installed sewer main in the Eustic corridor to serve properties who didn't have access otherwise. And then we also installed some streetlights along the Sellers Park front inch for a approximate project cost of $564,000. The ACHD Franklin Black Cat to Ten Mile Project. We installed sewer and water south and west of the Black Cat and Franklin intersection. And we also installed sewer east of the Purdum Drain. And we put a lot of streetlights along the corridor as part of a federal grant. And the total project cost was 1.3 million.
Can I hear a question on this one?
Oh, sure, thank you.
I've noticed the change orders are great on all of these slides, but there's a couple where there's a change order, then additional work is a deduct. So I...
Yeah, this was...
Quick snapshot of how there's an additional work deduction, but...
So the change orders, the bulk of those were... We ran into a lot of unsuitable soil, and so there's a lot of pit run added to the project. And then the additional work, we were able to reduce a lot of the sewer main that we were going to install originally because Bariah moved their entrance, their entrance, and so they moved where their sewer main needed to be. So we reduced about 600 linear feet of sewer.
So it's not necessarily additional work that's being completed? It's cost savings found in the existing work scope? Okay. Makes sense.
It's a deductive change order, but we...
Okay.
To be consistent with the way we represent those, it's listed as part of the additional work.
But you process them as a change order?
Yeah. It's processed as a deductive change order.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Christina Keith, and I was one of the project managers on the Black Cat Chunk Sewer Project. The other project manager was Blake on the project, sorry. This project was also part of the annexation commitments that the city had to extend services to South Meridian. This project extended the sewer in Meridian Road from Victory Road to approximately a quarter mile south of Amity. Now, these costs not only include the cost to actually build the sewer, but it also went into acquiring the easements that were required for this project. And then also, we built an RV pad at Valley Storage, which also went with the easements as well. And that total came to $4.5 million for this project. And then next, Al Christie will talk about streetlights. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council president, members of the council. My name is Al Christie, and I'm the Transportation and Utility Coordinator for the Public Works Department. For 2018, five streetlight projects were completed. Two of the projects utilized enhancement funds, and three of the projects utilized grant funds. The East Chateau Street Lighting Project installed five new streetlights along East Chateau Drive near Chief Joseph Elementary. In addition, two existing streetlights were upgraded to LED at the intersection of North Locust Grove and East Chateau. This project utilized enhancement funds to provide lighting on walking routes to the Chief Joseph Elementary. Design of the project was completed in-house, and the total project cost was $37,000. The Ten Mile Street Lighting Enhancement Project installed four streetlights on North Ten Mile Road between Cherry Lane and Eustic Road. This project utilized enhancement funds and poles that were left over from a previous year's project. Poles were installed in deficient areas along North Ten Mile Road. This project also utilized underground power that was installed by ACHD from a previous year's project. Design of this project was completed in-house, and the cost was just over $20,000. The Cherry Lane Street Lighting Project was a grant project that was done in coordination with ACHD to install streetlights on Cherry Lane between Meridian Road and Lender Road. The city paid $20,000 as a portion of a local match required for this local highway safety improvement grant. 26 lights were installed to provide additional lighting for the walking routes to the Meridian Middle School. The total overall cost of this project was just over $340,000. The Todd and Sandalwood Street Lighting Project was a CDBG grant project that installed 25 new streetlights along North Todd Way and Sandalwood Drive. The project provided additional lighting on walking routes to the Compass Charter School that's on Cherry Lane, and also to Lender Elementary School. The total project cost was $166,000. And finally, the West Chateau Street Lighting Project was also a CDBG grant project that installed 14 new lights on West Chateau Drive between Lender Road and North Ten Mile Road. This project provided additional lighting, walking routes to the Lender Elementary, and the total project cost was just over $94,000. And I will turn it over to Warren for some summary remarks. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Thanks, Al, and thanks to all of you staff. In summary, there were 20 capital projects closed in 2018. The value of those original contracts was about $13.4 million. The contract changes totaled approximately $633,000, and this comes to a total combination of change orders and original contracts of about $14 million. That equates to a cost growth, which you can see here, of about 4.4%. That's all things that contribute to essentially... In addition to the original contracts, most of that's change orders for unforeseen conditions and so forth. But some of that is for additional work that was re-requested in order to add things into the project that would actually save us money on future projects. Also, one of our goals as an engineering team is to try and keep the design costs in industry norms. Industry norm is about 15% for the overall design cost related to the overall project cost. It varies a little depending on the complexity of the project and also the size of the project. This year, we felt like we did very well, came in with an overall design cost of about 12%. So I think that went very well. The guys did, and gals, did a very good job in that regard. And then finally, just to kind of wrap up, there's a few things that we... That are probably worth noting that are not necessarily reflected in the project closeout report. One of the things that we also did this year, earlier in the year, we had the Engineering Week. We did an outreach to students, high school students and junior high students in the area. And actually did a presentation, a series of presentations for them one morning out at the wastewater treatment plant to try and encourage students to get involved in engineering and public works-related careers. And so it was really to try and highlight that, get some people, some interest and some people involved. Because one of the challenges that we constantly run into is finding enough good qualified candidates for the positions, the engineering positions and the public works positions that are available. So this was an opportunity for us to sort of get out there and try and encourage more kids in our community to take or to pursue careers in those areas. One of the other projects was the Bauer Street Improvement Project, the parking lot improvements that were done down here at the city's facilities. That was also managed by Christina, and I apologize again for messing up your introduction. Kyle mentioned briefly Pressure Zone 1, so we completed the Pressure Zone 1 boundary that will allow for growth in our northwest area of Meridian. We also completed the Water System Master Plan and a new Werf, or wastewater treatment plant facilities, master plan this past year. We also undertook... Al did. He led the effort to... Undertook an effort to basically develop a program to go out and do utility markouts for the electrical infrastructure that supplies electricity to our streetlights. We previously hadn't done this, and it was an area that had kind of been overlooked, and it was certainly a liability for the city if somebody were to strike one of those electrical lines. But we had no mechanism for doing that, so he undertook an effort with the Digline folks, and we got a contractor on board to initiate a program where we can now receive Digline tickets, send those to our contracted supplier or markout company. They go out and mark that infrastructure out, and then the city is protected from that liability. It's already saved us twice this year. There's been two different situations where our infrastructure has been struck, and because it was marked out, it's the contractor's responsibility to pay for the repairs, and otherwise, we would have been paying for those repairs. So it's been a really good addition, important thing that we added to the city. And then he... The new streetlights that were added to the city, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea. You saw a lot of the projects that were highlighted by Al's report, but some of the things that weren't included in that report were... There were 458 lights installed this year by developers, 117 lights by ACHD, and the city, between the enhancement funds that we had and the grant funds, installed another 57 lights. So our streetlight program is having an impact in our community, and we're able to provide safer walking routes and pedestrian routes and even vehicular routes for folks so that they can avoid unfortunate interactions. And so I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. And with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have. Thank you, Warren. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President.
Ms. Lyra Roberts.
Mr. President, excuse me. No questions. Just want to say thank you. Warren and your team never ceases to amaze me of what extended scope of work you have from water, sewer, streetlights, and what an amazing job you do with everything. I just spent some time with Dale learning about our over 7,000 streetlights and the huge undertaking, and we'll be hearing more about that in the following weeks. But just thank you for your diligence and your hard work and your dedication to the city.
Thank you. Great work, everybody. Thanks for being here today, too. Counsel, any other comments, questions?
Great presentation.
Good job, Warren.
Thank you.
Good job, Al, to the whole team. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
There's no gross pictures.
Next item we have, HC is back before us. This is the 2019 Roadway Intersection Community Programs Project Priorities. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago, went through the list. The draft letter then went out. Similar process we use each year. There's one minor adjustment, well, maybe not minor, one adjustment from what we saw last time with regards to Lender Overpass. And Caleb, we'll turn it over to you for eyeing a bow on this, and we're going to get this out. Recommendation...
this out, recommendation today, and get the letter out this week.
Mr. President, members of council, that is the goal. So by the end of this week, ACHD is asked to have any correspondences or project lists over to them, so that's what we're going to try to do. So as, as Councilman Borton just stated, I don't know how you guys want to tackle this. We can, we made it through most of the way, I think, through roadways and intersections. So if we want to tie a bow on that first and then jump into community programs, or do community programs, I saw some head nods, let's go ahead and just, so I mentioned in the memo that you have in your packet, I did make the change that Councilman Kavanagh mentioned about moving from, from Priority 5 to 2. That's been updated in, in the priority list you have in front of you at this point in time. It's actually on page, one, two, five is where roadway, so they're the blue if you're looking in, in color. I did highlight that yellow because that is a change from the last time you saw this list. I also just wanted to call to your attention Project 5. I received a correspondence this week. ACHD staff will be presenting their scoping report to their, their commission on Wednesday, so tomorrow. And one of the things that they're recommending is to defer Project 5 on our list, which is Locust Grove Road. I, I have that pulled up, or I can get it pulled up if you'd like, but essentially, their staff is questioning why we would want to do this project when there's curb gutter and sidewalk and bike lanes on both of these routes, roads, or along the segment of roadway, and it would, it would essentially tear into people's backyards to make this roadway segment five lanes wide. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. This is a corridor that, I just asked them, I said, what is the modeling show we need? Does it show we need five? Because I know, I live in that general neck of the woods, and I know at 5, 5:30, it backs way up, sometimes even almost to Franklin, because of where it next down there at Chateau. But I get it, those homes there are pretty close to the road, and if you widen that out to five lanes, you got a five-lane roadway in these neighborhoods. So there are pros and cons, but I wanted to just bring that to your attention. You know, maybe it's a three-lane roadway, you know, what, what benefit does that give to the community? Not, we need to think of motorists, too, but we also need to think about the pedestrians and cyclists, and then again, this being in, literally in people's backyards. So I don't know how much time, if at all, we need to talk about that, but I just thought I'd let you know that's where ACHD staff is. They're saying, let us think about this some more before we move further with this project. We want to reevaluate this internally and probably with the city. I said, yeah, we'd like to talk to you about that, but if you have any initial reactions to that, I could pull it up on Google if you're not really familiar with it, we can look at that, that mile segment, but again, just want to daylight that with you and talk about it for as little as long as you want, so.
Caleb, on that point, are you recommending that it move down from seven?
No, Councilman Borton, I, I didn't change, it's, so it's Priority Number 5 right now in the draft. It was seven last year. Yep, so five this year, but again, it, it's, it's advancing in that, in their process at ACHD, and they were just getting gearing up to start design 2023 or even sooner. But they're, they're recommending to rethink this and think about if it really needs, should be a five-lane roadway or, or only a three-lane roadway, so. I wouldn't recommend changing it. They have some technical analysis that they do, that's their priority corridor, or their prioritization criteria, congestion, safety. Some of this for us is a little more anecdotal and feelings-based almost a little bit. Should still be based on safety and congestion, but.
But you think keeping it at five, in light of those comments, is the most appropriate?
Again, if I had to put, besides Eagle Road, which doesn't really apply, I get probably more complaints about this section of roadway or the bottleneck that it creates there at Chateau than anywhere else in town. So five feels about right to me, just with, if I'm gauging that off of public concern for lack of the infrastructure there, but that's as motorists, right? That's for people driving cars, so. Anyways, that's, those are the real changes. That's the only two changes, the yellow highlights you have in front of your screen, everything else is the same from what you saw a week ago.
Counsel, any comments, questions, concerns, proceeding with what's before you? Has changed? No? Okay.
So then moving on to community programs, so thank you, Mr. Clerk, for bringing that up. If you want to go to the second, the second page, sorry, go backwards, go the other way. So yeah, the strawberry-colored pages. So this, I want to just kind of do a little bit of a commentary from the Transportation Commission and their changes to you from last year. I'm not going to highlight all the changes because they all change to some degree because there were some pretty radical movements on here, and those are really the ones I want to, I want to touch on, and I'll just go in order here. So the proposed Priority Number 4 moved up pretty substantially, that's East Third here, Franklin to Carlton. So this is actually two phases, as you can, you can see there. The, the commission really gets that. There's a railroad crossing on this corridor, and it also connects Story Park across railroad tracks to, to Fairview, and really can serve as that pedestrian-friendly, multi-use corridor. So that did advance because they, they see some of that there and moved it up accordingly. Priority Number 6 this year, again, advanced from 23 last year. There's been some, some incidents there with, and I'm not sure if it's 100% middle school students, but I know with the middle school and, and the library there, it's an attractive nuisance, if you will, and kids are crossing mid-block. There's been a couple of them that have been hit crossing there. There's, there is a crossing, obviously, and 8th Street is fully signalized in at Linder, but they're just not going to those to cross. So this one is, is proposed, moved up. And then 13 is the one I wanted to highlight for you as a new one that we're adding to this, to the list this year. Just, just in that it's new and it's starting off at 13, so that's pretty high for a new project to be all the way up at 13. That is, there's a crossing guard there in Tuscany that goes to Sienna, so it's one of the backroads behind Sienna, and a crossing guard crosses there, and it's sort of on a curve. Again, I can pull this up on Google Earth if you want to see it, but that was, that was a request there to assist essentially with the safe crossing of, of kids from the west side of Tuscany to get them to Sienna. I'm going to move all the way down to Project Number 30 now, and this is a big one. This was last year's Number 1. This is Railroad Trail. And it's actually three projects in Railroad Trail. So there's the Railroad Trail as a corridor, and then we had, and still have, if you actually look at the last, second, third to last and fourth to last on the list, we had a specific project called out at Meridian Road and Main Street for the pedestrian signals here downtown for the Railroad Trail project. And the commission took all three of those, put it into one, and moved it down to Number 30. You, I don't know if you need to read too much into that, that, that's kind of where it fell out on their priority rank, so not huge fans of Railroad Trail. I think some of that had to do with, well, I'll just, and this was one commissioner, although I didn't hear anybody rebut it necessarily, was this list to ACHD shouldn't be a wish list, they should be viable projects. So that was kind of the sentiment was, we aren't getting any movement from UP, we shouldn't waste our points with ACHD on something that's an issue with the corridor and getting the right-of-way needed to put this project in. So I don't think it speaks so much to the, the project itself being a viable project if we had somewhere to go, just that people are like, well, we heard no, and we don't think it's going to happen, you know, like giving up hope kind of thing. So anyways, that's a brief summary, but kind of the sentiment from the Transportation Commission on that. And then the ne, the, the next four projects on your list as well, so 31, 32, 33, and 34, those are all pedestrian hybrid beacons or similar hawk signals that we have out here in City Hall, so pedestrian actuated, someone wants to cross the road, they push, it's not, not operating unless a pedestrian comes up and actually says, hey, I'm here to cross signal. Again, to just kind of summarize the sentiment there, the commissioner that made the motion basically said, we, you know, some of these can be solved with human solutions and shouldn't be, i.e. a crossing guard at 8th Street at, at the middle school. There should be something that should be human solve, not, or a human could solve this problem, and it's behavioral, not, not having it being solved with infrastructure, basically. And some concerns about us getting a little, a little PED signal happy in Ada County and throwing these up just whenever there happens to be one or two people that cross during the day, and, and throwing this money at all these pedestrian signals, two, three in a mile even, and that being kind of over the top, so some concern that way. So that largely summarizes those pedestrian signals and sometimes near schools. I think with that, those are kind of the big changes. Obviously, every project changed at least a little bit because there were some pretty big shakeups starting at the very top. I think that's everything, though, I had on that, and I'll, I'll be ready to make any notes. Oh, the letter. So I didn't hear anything back from anybody. I don't know if there's any changes to that. The clerk does have the letter that I shared with you all late last week, sorry that didn't make it in your packet, but if there's changes, I can do that real quick and print it and bring it back. I did add to the version that, that the clerk has, just a carbon copy, so we'll copy you all on the signed version and send it all to, all the ACHD commissioners as well, but that's the only change I've made. With that, again, Mr. President, I would stand to take any notes or try to answer any questions you may have.
Perfect, thank you, Caleb. Counsel, any questions on this? Luke, you have any comments from the Transportation Commission perspective?
Mr. President, I, I was absent from the Transportation Commission this week, so I feel very confident in Caleb's ability to articulate. His comments sound in line with what I hear from that commission on a fairly regular basis. My only comments, in fact, some of the comments that the Transportation Commission mirrored some requests, theirs were some were a little higher in little spots, a little lower in others. The only one that I'm not quite on board with is the dramatic shift with Rails with Trails. And, and again, I don't know where the rest of the council feels. That has been a long-term priority for our city, a project that we have worked on in varying degrees for a number of years. And somewhat to Caleb's point, if we move it down to Number 30, I think it is somewhat signalizes that this is no longer a priority for our city, and I don't think that's necessarily the case, so I'm, I'm not supportive of moving it down that far. To me, I think it's a, should remain in the top 10. That's where I had, I moved it down, but I had it listed at Number 10. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. And then I think it's a, a larger conversation for us, specifically, there's a lot of projects that are on there that are sidewalk projects in Old Town, and I just don't know if, kind of to using the commission's perspective, we want to use our points on sidewalks in Old Town. There perhaps could be a better mechanism through CDBG to address some of that, and I feel like that's a way to maybe better leverage some of our financial resources onto some other projects that I think are important for our community. So I'm somewhat supportive, and again, if, if you guys want to keep it all as is, I'm not going to be upset, but I do think it's worth moving at least the Rails with Trails up, and I would also feel comfortable moving some of the sidewalk projects in Old Town down.
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, counsel, I would agree with moving the Rails with Trails up to 10. I don't like the message that it sends that it perceived, even if that's not what the aim was, that perceives that, where you don't view it as important, even though it is in in process and moving slowly. I think we need to keep it in the top 10 as a focus point, because that is pretty critical for what our goals are.
I agree. I think that's a good observation to show that consistent commitment to us, to whatever degree we can, that that's a goal long-term. The sidewalk, I don't necessarily, I think it's a, keeping those up, an opportunity to, to support that type of infrastructure investment downtown when it's sorely lacking. Probably would keep those as ranked, but agree that moving up Railroad Trail makes sense as well. Any other comments, questions, changes? The one of the, the idea was, Mr. Kavanagh, move it from 30 to 10? That sound right? All right. That sounds, makes sense, sounds good to me. Any heartburn with that? Seen none? We'll make that change. Caleb, is that?
Just in the interest of full disclosure, and I don't know if you're fully done, but that right-hand column, I'll probably clean up a little bit, too, but I won't change anything, but some, there's just some shorthand kind of stuff in the right-hand column at all before we attach it to, to the letter.
Mr. President. Caleb, just for, for my benefit for future years, where do these projects, you know, originate from? I know that in some cases, it's a City Council ask or an HOA, but do some of these come from the Transportation Commission as priorities? And I guess to me, if there are projects that are coming from the Transportation Commission, they should probably also receive special consideration, and I just, I've never known how, some of these have been on here forever, where they originally came from.
Mr. President, Councilman Kavanagh, I, I can let you know, now, all of these have been on the list for some time, I may not remember exactly how they all got on the list, but it is a variety of ways. Most of them, when I hear about them, I add it to the list so that the Transportation Commission can be officially the ones that add it to the list. I put it at the very bottom as a placeholder, and if you're like, no, we don't want that even on the list at all, that's their prerogative to do to come to you, but some of these are individual commissioners, some of these are just individual citizens, sometimes I meet, I try to meet annually, it didn't work out this year with Miranda Carson with the, with the school district to see what's on their list, and then, so we can support them, they can support us in some of these projects where there's joint interest for safe routes to school type of things. So again, there's a variety of ways, through the mayor's office, you know, just individual citizens contacting me. There isn't any one way, but again, they're all vetted through the, the Transportation Commission first before coming to you, so anything, I'm kind of the clearinghouse for it all, then through the Transportation Commission, then to you, so that's kind of sort of how the sausage is made.
So Caleb, we've got some consensus on one minor final change. No changes needed for the letter, I don't think, to account for that necessarily, but need a formal motion to adopt?
I don't. I heard from three that 10 to, 10 to, or 30 to 10 is, is the change, and we'll do that. If you want to make it a motion, we'll accept it, but if you're willing to sign the letter, that's all I really need.
I think you had all five of us. Okay, with that, I saw head nods. If not, no? Good, okay. Then we'll sign the letter tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caleb. Good job. Item 8D, Parks and Rec Department Pathways Update, a good, oh, perfect, thanks. Good timing. We've had some conversations, welcome, about ensuring pathways, which is a priority for the commission. Councilman Kavanagh brought up ensuring was, some of the budget discussions, that pathways remains on the front of everyone's mind, so the timing's great. We appreciate you being here.
Mr. President, members of the council, that was a really efficient segue. So I am here to talk about pathway priorities. It's a little less detailed than what Caleb just shared, and also to look at the latest edition of our pathways map for approval, not today, but for your consideration. So I will go through our pathway priorities. CJ, if you, do you have the latest of that presentation? If you don't, it's not a big deal, I only made a minor date change that I can speak to, so. Okay.
One, Kim?
Yeah.
Wait, 2:15, that's 25 minutes later.
The graphics will be better. Great. Wonderful. Let's see. Can you? There we go.
All right.
Okay, so this was, this list was adopted via resolution earlier this year by our park commissioners. It is a priorities list, it's not exactly a ranking of 1 to 10 list. We feel like everything is important, we've classified it in various ways, system build-out and, and specific construction projects versus some process and planning tools. So I'll just go through it pretty quickly. Five Mile Creek Pathway is one of our stated priorities, so we have a few projects going relative to that. James Court, do you want, would you like a quick update on each of these, or would you prefer to just ask questions if you have them, questions?
We'll ask questions.
Okay, yeah. So, pardon me, I didn't hear that, Councilman Kavanagh.
Mr. President, I, I would prefer an update, and then as, as you are updating, if questions arise, I'll chime in, if that's okay.
Wonderful, thanks for clarification. So James Court's sidewalk widening has been ongoing for a while. We've been slowed down a bit by difficulty in getting easements. Had a bit of help from you last week with that. So we, we're really close to having permission to build that project, so because we don't quite have it yet, we are laying groundwork, we're moving utilities that need to move and looking to get approvals so that when we do have the final down similarly. And we did talk to a consultant who did a quick, I would call it a fit plan, and we really don't need additional easement for that project. We can kind of squeeze it within the existing Fairview right-of-way. So we had checked with ACHD about that. So we're moving forward in the same way with that one. We would like to get relocation of power poles underway, and some basic estimates of what's it going to take to design, so we can return to you with a budget amendment, as requested. But it looks like that one might move forward pretty easily. The 10 Mile Road Trailhead, we're just finalizing the cost-share agreement. This is adjacent to the Five Mile Creek Pathway at 10 Mile Road near the wastewater. Is it now the Resource Recovery Center? So that's exciting. It's moving along. I spoke to, so it's close with the cost-share. I spoke to a design consultant and got a scope of work to do the rest of the landscape architectural work associated with trailhead amenities. So that can't happen until the cost-share is finalized, but that's the status of that project. Segment D between 10 Mile and Black Cat Roads continuing westward from the wastewater treatment plant. We did decline TAP funding for that project. So whereas we always hate to give up federal funding, we also feel like it frees us up to move forward a little more quickly with this project. And I just heard via Public Works that there's possibly an access change and a property acquisition in the works, so we continue to adjust that alignment. But it's definitely a keen priority still. So Railroad Trail is a priority for us, both at a local and a regional level. I know we're listening to the mayor somewhat in that regard, and that, if Rachel is still here with Compass, they started up the work group, again, the Railroad Trail Work Group, so that's moving forward on a regional level, and Steve and I have been supporting that, going to meetings and helping as appropriate. And we feel like this local project is a key example to say, technically, it might not be Railroad Trail, but here's something that works, and just to be a seed, a beginning. So that, we are also working on right-of-way for, and that involves some property acquisition, and we're close, close on that one as well, so to getting permission to move forward. It's been an ongoing priority to connect Meridian to the Boise Green Belt. Aldapi Park will be a part of that, but the, we continue to push and look to develop the north-south connections at Linder and Locust Grove, and partner with Eagle to aim for that. It's a little bit longer term. The Lump-Larkwood Pathway is going to be paved this spring. We had to wait for settlers' irrigation to do some bank stabilization work in the lump canal, and they jumped ahead to help us out with that work. And so we are, that's actually in the process of procurement. So that, as soon as asphalt is, as soon as it's warm enough and the plants are open, we'll pave that. It's very close. Pathway system signage is kind of an ongoing thing. I think as much as signs themselves, we're thinking of potentially some kind of pavement marking that would identify the pathway system, specifically Five Mile Creek, as its own entity, so people don't get lost in some of the areas where it's not quite as connected for now. And then, we're here tonight to talk about the map. And then one other thing in terms of process improvement, you may be familiar with, in Community Development, they have cut sheets providing information on various aspects of the planning process, and I'd like to do that for pathways. You know, what's required, just a basic overview of pathway profiles, things that are found in the pathways master plan, but that you kind of have to dig for, where I end up sending to people individually. So I'd like to create just a few informational sheets that are easily downloadable or available, just so that information is presented a little more clearly and concisely. So I would love to entertain any questions about that list.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? All good.
Okay. So moving on, to the map update. I'm really glad to be here. This has been a while in coming. We had some staff transition, and, but it's an ongoing process where I'm always taking notes and keeping files of things that have been built or need to change, things I hear from the public. So we have a working layer that kind of changes as we go. We have great support from Community Development. I don't feel like, even though there's been a little bit of a longer timeframe, we haven't missed any key connections. We're really, but I'm glad to be here tonight. I included this section. It was a public meeting for the comp plan, just a little tie-in. People love pathways, and I know there's a lot of support from you all, but this, to be able to adopt this new map, just gives us a much better tool for making sure we can preserve that connectivity. So my idea tonight, this can be a lot of information to present, and it can be laborious, and so my idea was to give you some background into what was the methodology, how did we make the changes, what kind of changes did we make, and then give you some really specific information to sit with for a couple of weeks before we ask for a resolution. So I'm going to go through the process and hope that that works, and entertain any feedback on it. So we were looking at three different types of map changes. There are pathways that have been constructed and simply need to go from a proposed line to an existing line. There are also alignment changes, where maybe we got a bit more specific based on what's happening with development, or, you know, you're going right through the middle of a gravel pit, and we thought, well, we'll at least steer around that. So a few fine-tuning adjustments, but nothing too major in terms of drawing new lines. We also did consider growth areas and where we need new pathways, because that got a little panicky. I mean, it's exciting as we grow west, but there is a lot happening, and we can catch some of that with development agreements, but we wanted to look at areas primarily on the edges. We were calling growth areas. There are also some areas where we were, just felt like there were some challenges in connectivity, and heard that from the commission also. So those areas were north, Black Cat, Aldapi Park area. There's some development that's happening kind of up here around Black Cat, and so we're thinking about how does that connect to the new park. There's a new high school to the west. I know that, and then there's not a lot out there. So there are some proposed developments to the north, but we're looking at how do kids walk to school, how can those, all those trips generated happen safely. Then in the Settlers Park South Slough area, there were some redundancies in terms of pathways here. We're looking at how can we make some improvements. Segment D, Five Mile Creek, I spoke to already as a priority. 10 Mile Crossing, there have been quite a few exciting things happening out here with pathway, one of which is pathway along the interstate corridor, just north of, that actually has the ability to go west of 10 Mile Road. So we started showing pathway north of the corridor in areas where it made sense, either because an area seemed poised to redevelop, or where there wasn't a lot of development to start with. It may not be a contiguous pathway, but that's something we're showing. We considered South Meridian and Hillsdale, the new YMCA. There's been a lot of growth out there, and connectivity is really important. I fielded a couple of calls on that. And we're also showing state highways on this map. That's something that we speak to in our planning review meetings and require, but for some reason, it just hasn't been on the map before. So just not really a big change, just an addition. So we had a workshop to talk about this. It would have been really great when we set up our table if we had one of those cameras that they have on cooking shows, so you could actually see her, because we did create maps, you know, with aerials of the areas that, in the colored bubbles, and sketched and talked about them just as a group, and wrote down some ideas. And that, it was a useful, it was a useful session. So the new pathway connections that we're showing really are the ideas and directives that came out of that meeting, along with just needs that we sense in terms of growth and where development is happening. I'll tell you also that it's stronger data. That was part of why it took a while, and I'm not one to give a good technical explanation of this, but we've now integrated it with the sidewalk layer. I'll give a shout out to Brian McClure in Community Development, who is amazing. He's a landscape architect and kind of a GIS whiz, so he was a great liaison between me and GIS, and this data is now, it's cleaner, it's analyzable for walkability and connectivity. I think it'll be more useful to us. We haven't really started taking advantage of that yet, but the data that's in there has been redone in a way that we can, that it means more to us. So that's exciting, and I really do appreciate, he was motivated somewhat by the comp plan and wanting to get that layer done, and it really worked to our advantage as well. So we did create a new map. It's not particularly readable on a screen. I've been, as a practice since I got here, breaking it in, the city into north and south, because then I do get two 30-by-40 maps that, at least viewed in person, are much more readable. So I'm just showing you this informationally. And then I did hand out copies of this pathways map book, and this is a tool, actually, I've been carrying around with me since we did the first draft, but our thought was that any area that has changed, well, it's keyed out by, in four square mile squares. So because the maps can be hard to read, and it can be laborious to go through every single change, we thought if there are areas that you are particularly concerned about, feel like there's connectivity urge sometime in the next couple of weeks, check them out in this book, keep it as a tool. It's always a snapshot, you know, changes have probably happened since this was produced. So at this point in time, this is accurate, as accurate as we can get it, but it's always evolving. So there is a legend, and the, any areas where we've significantly changed the alignment or done a new alignment will show up in this aqua-blue layer. So I'm hoping that gives you some confidence in the process we use to propose changes. It is a lot of information. So at this point, I would encourage you to spend as much or as little time with it as you wish. Let me know if you have any questions or see any missing pieces. We did present this to Park Commission, and they were in support of it. You could also direct questions to Director Sitaway. So we thought we'd just give it some time, and come back on the consent agenda in a couple of weeks, if that feels appropriate. So are there any questions? No?
Thank you very much for the presentation, Counsel. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Ms. Milo.
No questions, because I've been through this already before.
Yes.
Great presentation and great work. Thank you for all of the time. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of time and energy spent on this project. Thank you for.
I appreciate that, Councilwoman Milo. Yeah, it's, we don't have a huge city, but it's, it's big in area. And it's, after being here 18 months now, I have, I've been out on most of the pathways and have a much better sense, but I did get some good help from GIS and Community Development, and I'm really glad to have this tool ready to use formally. I think it will be, it feels, feels good. Thank you.
Where do you, where do you draw the line on your north-south for the southeast? He's not listening.
No, President Burton, that's an interesting question. Roughly at I-84. Yeah, there wasn't much intention as much as just fitting it on the map, but realistically, that does divide us.
And then, sort of off, not totally off-topic, but is, do these still get made as a byproduct of the new map, and then, just carried around, I think it's great, so?
We haven't spoken of it, but I believe they should. I think they're great. I also have goals to, with this new data that I was talking about, it's a little more, you can query and isolate it by various data factors. So we could conceivably have an online tool for people to say, where is the Five Mile Creek Pathway, and maybe print a route, or save a route, or show the Meridian loop, be a little more specific with mileages. And so I think some kind of a better tool for the public is a great idea, and it may be a map like that. Steve?
That is kind of old-school. I get it.
No, and I wasn't, pardon for asking. I wasn't implying that so much as, yeah, we just haven't talked about it. I think it may be a two-pronged solution, because I think a map itself would be really useful. Steve?
Mr. President, councilmembers, I was just going to chime in that we do still produce those maps. We don't print new ones every year. It's been every two to three years as, whenever we run out of the thousand or so that we print, when we go to a printing. But we still have enough to last us well into this year, but when they run out, we will, we do plan on doing another round with whatever updates are in place at that time.
Perfect. Thanks, Steve.
All right.
Counsel, any other wrap-up questions? Okay, we'll be back in a couple of weeks with this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of the department report, but I, we're going to cut in real quick, and Chief has a quick update we want to share with regards to some legislation.
Mr. President, Counsel, thank you. I asked President Burton for just a couple moments. Today was a very important day. We were down, Chief Levy and myself were down at the government office, and he signed Senate Bill 1028. So that was the PTSI legislation. I just wanted to take an opportunity on behalf of both Police Department and the Fire Department to thank all of you for your support. That support that you showed on the record did not go unnoticed, as we went out and reached out to legislators and interested parties in this whole process. They knew Meridian supported this bill, and that is a testament to all of you. And so on behalf of all the first responders here in Meridian, thank you. It was a great day in the government office. We're looking forward to continuing our department's efforts on the proactive side, and that was something that we stressed, is let's not get to this point, but if we do, we now have protection. So just wanted to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate that update and success. 9A is a continued public hearing for the proposed vehicle immobilization booting ordinance. Mr. Neri?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, I just wanted to point out one change from last week's discussion. There were two items brought up by one of the booting companies of interest or concern. One was the 12-hour time period between a car being booted and when it could be towed. I didn't get any indication from the council to change that, so that's still the way it's written into the ordinance. But the other was the concern about the revocation, and the immediate revocation, and the impact that could be. So Ms. Kane went back and looked at the ordinance, and what is more common, and we have done before, so we didn't feel this was out on a limb or a change, is providing notice to the licensee that they are going to, that they are revoked, subject to an appeal. So there, and there's a time delay between the revocation effective date and the appeal process. So they have the ability to appeal that revocation. It essentially is a notice, but it doesn't require another subsequent action if they don't appeal it. So it was a way to sort of get between the concern about immediate revocation, but also not require a lot more administrative action if the person doesn't wish to appeal that. So there's a 14-day gap between that, gives them time to appeal, then there's a process for a hearing that comes before the council. At that point, if there's an appeal. So that was the only change since from last week.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions on at least those comments? It is a public hearing. Anyone signed up to testify?
There's been no, no sign-ups, Mr. President.
No sign-ups. The room is near empty. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to provide some testimony on this proposed ordinance? There is none. Counsel, we could do a couple of things. Obviously, we're going to continue this. We could keep the public hearing open, continue for a third reading, which is most common, so we'll just do that, continue it until next week, to the 19th.
Continue to the 19th.
Or a third reading, public hearing.
That's what we said we would do, so.
And potential action next week, after the third reading, so. President? Mr. Cavanagh.
Would we continue the public hearing on the proposed vehicle immobilization ordinance to next Tuesday, March 19?
It's been moved to seconded to continue item 9A to March 19 for the continued public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is continued. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for the changes there. Item 10A, ordinance 19-
Would we continue the public hearing on the proposed vehicle immobilization ordinance to next Tuesday, March 19th?
It's been moved and seconded to continue item 9A to March 19th for the continued public hearing. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It is continued, thank you. Thank you, Bill, for the changes there. Item 10A, ordinance 191816. Mr. Clerk, please read it, read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Meridian, ordinance number 19-1816, an ordinance filed H-2018-0115, Warwick subdivision, for annexation of a parcel of land located in the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 32, township 3 North, range 1 East, Boise, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 36.22 acres of land from R-U-T to R-4, medium-low-density residential, 19.94 acres, and R-8, medium-density residential, 16.28 acres zoning districts in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We've heard this ordinance read by title. Does anybody wish to hear it in its entirety? Nobody?
Sure.
Not?
Mr. President.
Ms. Mylum.
I move we approve ordinance number 19-1816 with suspension of rules.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-1816 with suspension of rules. Mr. Clerk, please call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Item 10B, ordinance 191817, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Meridian, ordinance number 19-1817, an ordinance filed H-2018-0125 in Trotta Farms, for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter and the east half of the southwest quarter of Section 10, township 3 North, range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 19.07 acres of land from R-U-T to R-15, medium-high-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Does anybody wish to hear it in its entirety? Nobody, again. 0 for 2. With that, is there a motion?
I guess. Mr. President.
Ms. Mylum.
I move we approve ordinance number 19-1817 with suspension of rules.
Been enthusiastically moved and seconded to approve ordinance 191817. Mr. Clerk? Ready to vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Thank you. Brings us to the end of the agenda. Future meeting topics. Anything for the good of the order?
Mr. President, not many meeting topics, but on our workshop meetings, we used to have updates for our departments or liaisons, and we haven't been doing that the last couple of months. So I do have a few things in the Parks Commission, or the Parks Department, if you guys are interested. Can I have about a half hour?
But the floor is yours.
Okay. All right, let's go. Well, obviously, we're going into budget season, so we've started meeting on that kind of stuff. Discovery Park is going great in the construction. The ball fields are nearly completed, and they, we're just working on the water flow, you know, river, the endless river. Let's see. The Main Street Market is going to start on April 12th, and then we have the Plane and the Plaza, which has music here out on the plaza, which will be every Thursday from June 13th to July 25th, except for 4th of July. And we have nominations submitted for two awards for Parks and Rec. I went for Hillsdale Park and one for the work that the participatory budgeting from the Mayak. And selfie swings, this is exciting for me, because this is something I've been pushing for, since, well, several, lots, a long time. Selfie swings were installed in three parks, and one more. So we have them in Settlers, we have one in Settlers, Kleiner and Story, and then we're going to put it one in Bear Creek, and people seem to be loving it so far. And the summer activity guys coming out on April 12th, and also Arbor Day, put it in your calendars. The Arbor Day celebration where we plant a tree at a school is going to happen at Peregrine, and it's on April 12th, 1:30.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.